Very hopeful and faithful in your promise of healing. We pray for all of our law enforcement and everyone on the front lines. We pray for your wisdom to make very difficult decisions, but we do with your wisdom, grace, and courage, we can all come together for our community. We glorify your name in the words of Savior gave us our Father.
To our heaven, how would it be that name, our King of the home, our Lord and our God, who is in heaven? Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, leaving us in harm's position, that the Lord is coming without the kingdom, the power, and glory to our Father.
This morning, Mr. Martin, you listen pledge.
Our congratulations to the pride of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, and equal legal, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. First on the agenda is to recognize executive director and CFO, Gulf Coast Mental Health Department Center for Updates. Is that you?
Yes, Corey Hall.
Could you please come up and state your name and the address of your business?
Okay, I'm Corey Hall, and our address is 1600 Broad Avenue, North Port.
And would you start your report, please, sir? The Health Department, the Gulf Coast Mental Health Updates.
Okay, well, we have a lot going on at the Gulf Coast Mental Health Center right now with the advent of the pandemic. We've had to close one of our departments, the Gulf Coast Industries. We've got a little bit of that facility there, the day treatment facility, over 50 clients gathering there on their place, so we've closed that department. We look closely at our other facilities, specifically the Crossroads Recovery Center and Crisis Stabilization Unit, because both of those are inpatient residential facilities again, and looking at those very closely, and we did make the decision that we were able to keep those open and still admitting patients there. The rest of our services, we moved from going face-to-face meetings with our clients to telehealth. Some of those are being telephonic in nature, and then some are, by the way, computer. Or if the client has FaceTime or another app, we'll use that app as well.
Just call, could you give us a preview of your cash flow operations, probably in recent past, and what you anticipate in the future, few months in the future, as far as cash flow?
Yes, sir. So, of course, you're well aware of our past history, where we almost shuttered last summer because of cash flow issues and with the health of the counties and the Department of Mental Health that infused us with a large amount of cash at that time, did not power to solve cash flow problem that was still existent, and that was relative to the billing side. So, the amount of bills that we were submitting and collecting were far below what they had been in previous years. Various reasons behind that, I'm not sure 100% that I have 100% of the solution there or 100% of even the problem, but some of it was coding and changes that was made to the billing system itself. Most of that has been corrected, and the billings are going out. However, they're not back to the levels that they were in prior years. So, we still have that cash flow on the basis.
How about credentialing?
The credentialing, of course, that was outsourced by PMG, a local facility here, and they have made tremendous strides on the credentialing of the staff. That was another issue that we had. We found out while the staff was not credentialed, so, you know, they were seeing clients who'd been billed for those months because they were not properly credentialed with the payers. So, all of that has been resolved for the most part. I think there's maybe smattering that remains. Stacy might want to help me out on that point, but like you say, most of that has been helped out, has been resolved. Client, the providers, Medicare certified, and many of the payers.
You asked a good question. Have you, you've not cut services. You've corrected the billing, but the cash flow is still the same. So, what, why is that?
Yes, and that's because the billing has just not got back to prior year levels. So, and sorry, I've not just not been able to investigate to see, is it because we are providing less services, less billable services, or the nature of the services has changed? I've not been able to investigate that part of it.
Has the computer billing system, the computer itself, whatever technology is in reference to your billing, has that been corrected? Are you still having computer problems in reference to billing, coding on the computers? I'm not a, I'm not a technology person, but my understanding was that the coding was a problem, and the problem was primarily the computer system wasn't operating correctly. I know we brought some people in from another region. Has a, has a computer system of the hardware, software part of the billing process in reference to the computers, has that been corrected? And is that operating like it should?
100%, I wouldn't think that we would say yes, no, not 100%. I would think that a lot of work has been done. We've done a lot of corrections made. We've had a lot of guidance from Region Seven that came down, and they came down again since, since you probably know, over a holiday weekend, helped us out. So, we've done a lot of work with that. We're making sure that, a lot of it is because there's a lot of manual systems that happen in our organization. The staff do a little part of this, and then it goes to another staff person, and then it gets finally entered into the AS400, is the name of the software. And so, by the time it gets to that, and somebody has to check it, and so there's just too much human interaction to, for it to get into the computer correctly. So, we're trying to correct those processes. PMG is the credentialing company that our board just recently approved for them to come in and, and help us with the billing, and so that's been helpful. They came in and manually went through the process throughout, you know, Hancock County, Harrison County, and Stone County, and with each department director with their billing experts, and, and helped us find some processes that were not working well in those things. Some of it has to do with this guy's not talking with that guy. So, 100% is the bill, is the, is the computer software set up correctly? I would say no, not 100%. We're finding errors all the time, and we clean those up as quickly as we can. It's still a challenge.
So, you need a HOGY protocol? You sound like you need an IT person to come in and use the entire.
We would love for Ron to come up.
Did y'all, your predecessor had switched you over to QuickBooks, and now you're back on the system you're supposed to be on, is that right?
No, ma'am. The AS400 is the system that was used to do all of the billing, and it has retained. When they switched to QuickBooks, that was just for the financial side of it, and it's still in QuickBooks.
See, what? I thought that was all supposed to be changed a long time ago, right off the, I thought that was supposed to be taken care of in the very beginning, when we first found out that there were issues, that we were totally off of QuickBooks and into something else.
If I may, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know if the system itself, what you have, is a problem. I don't, it, it might be the input into the system is the problem. And because you have Region Seven that has the same system that we have here on 13th, theirs is operating apparently at some efficiency, 95, 97, I don't know exactly what happens in it, but their system, which is the same as this system, is operating efficiently. So, it's not the system itself. I'm not, that's what I'm saying, I'm not a technic, but I don't know if it's the input coming from, as you said, the individuals, each individual has to do something, and it goes in.
It's twofold. It's made up of, you configure the computer system itself, and it has a set of constant directories that, as you input your information into it, draws them on. Well, my understanding is that our predecessors made significant changes to that. Well, that's very complicated, because you've got this file looks at this file, looks at this file, looks at this file, they all operate together. If you go in and start making changes to one area of it without considering all of the different areas, you could really mess things up.
It's like a double no effect, if you change one little thing, you lose everything.
And that's, that's exactly what happened. They made those changes, and it just, it created a fiasco within the system. Now, that that's been rectified, you still have that other problem of, yeah, we still get improper coding into the system. So, incorrect diagnosis is input into the system, and that drives a lot of the billing.
Can you give us a percentage of your bills going out and the percentage of the revenue of those bills coming in?
We are about 74%.
So, you're still lacking about 26% of not getting paid for your services?
Yes, sir.
And that's way under what it should be?
Yes, that, that would be my estimation. Because all of our services are with Medicaid, we should be collecting near 100% of that.
Whoever is supplying your IT, they should have a training person that would be willing to sit down with your people, because if it's human error, that's, you can't run a business that way. We can't, we can't continue. This is, just seems strange to accept this. 74%. We've known this for what, over a year, that it was a problem?
Yes.
Human error.
So, what?
74%. At first, it was less than that.
Yeah, it was less than.
Because this improves, so.
But there's not a support for the company, I'm asking, that wrote the program, to literally, physically send someone to train our people, your people?
No, they're, again, their, their responsibility is more on the software itself, not the data input that we're doing in the system. So, part of it is our processes were not correctly defined well enough. In some instances, we found that we were using older manuals that were no longer acceptable for coding purposes. Diagnosis codes on a, chained on a regular basis, so we need to have them updated with those codes, and they just aren't up to date.
And the billing was supposed to be contracted out, is that my understanding?
Yes, we, so the commission recently approved that, actually, in the last month's coordinating, the commission approved us outsourcing the billing. We had a conference call, actually, earlier today with DMG, and discussing that, and one of the parameters is they want us to move from our manual system right now that we're using for documenting the client access to an electronic health record prior to them taking the vote, so that will facilitate that. So, that's one of the things that we were just talking about.
What you're basically saying is an individual, when providing a service, is going to input on a computer at that moment, at that real time, or immediately applying service input information into the computer?
Yes, and that removes some of the errors that we're encountering in the data entry part of that equation.
I have a, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask you, have we written off the previous bill, billing that was unable to, we were unable to get because of the credentialing problem? Are we still working on possibly recouping some of those bills?
A lot of the, a lot of the, they did a lot of work when Region Seven came down and helped us go through some things, and wrote off a bunch of things that were in the system that were just dead in the water, unrecoverable, and then.
Which was time sensitive, by time, past time.
Yes, most of the time, we have 12 months to process the claims appropriately. If we file it and the payer rejects it, that does not constitute a timely filing until we file it in a manner that they could process it. So, we still are making headway. Actually, last month, we had a fairly significant submission to one of the payers correcting previous bills.
But at some point, if your billing is corrected, I mean, if you're properly inputting your bills into the system, and you get up a high percentage of returns, I understand it's going to always be errors, I'm sure, but not at 74%. If you get up around whatever, I think they say 98, 97%. At what point do you anticipate being there? Because as, we would assume that once you get there, then your cash flow problem's going to be solved.
Right.
I mean, do you have an idea that roughly, what do you think?
Six months here.
Do you have some time period in which that, that billing and, and then the revenue coming in will, will be sufficient to cover for your cash flow?
At this point in time, with the pandemic, it's hard to say. You know, we, we feel like we're making gains when we look at how many billable days there are in a month, and how much we brought in that month, you know? So, we're looking at that, how much it brings in every month, or how many days there were. So, that looks like it's going up a little bit, and we're making gains on that, so we just keep striving to make better gains and better gains. But with the pandemic, it's hard to say. We're trying to watch closely as our staff are providing telehealth to people out in the community right now. We're trying to work with our department directors and run those professional staff to provide mental health therapy. If you've got, you know, 10 people you're seeing today, and you usually see, I don't know, 15, or should we merge those staff into one person and let that roll out? So, we're trying to make sure that billing stays where it should be, but also staffing stays where it should be. So, we're not paying people that are not actually, we don't need 10 people, we need 95 people.
That's my, that's my big question.
So, you, you looked at your staffing?
Yes, it's, it's very difficult, but it's, you know, we had daily calls there for a while, and now we've gone to every other day calls, and it's a topic of discussion just about every conversation. Are you watching your, your staffing? Are you watching, you know, how many clients you're, you're talking to on the phone, and that kind of thing? It's something I've got to go back and talk to two department directors this afternoon about.
I have one other question. How do you categorize, or do you ask each patient where they're from? And I've had reports that you service Jackson County individuals and services, citizens. Are you keeping, do you know if some of the, now, the group is four, if I'm not mistaken, or is it three?
Three.
Three now, I apologize. It's Stone, Hancock, and Harrison, and we lost before. So, do you, is that emphasized? Do you ask for their driver's license or some type of identification when they come in to ask them what county they're from? And then, is that percentage applied correctly to each? Is each county billed appropriately?
Does Jackson County pay you when their people come over here?
No, that's the, that's the short answer. No, we don't collect.
Well, I want to know, but I know, but I want to know the categories.
Typically, typically, a rule, a rule is that we do not, on a general basis, admit patients from outside our service area. But that does not mean we do not see patients from outside our service area. Stacy might be a better to strike.
I think, if I may take off on what I think Connie is asking, that when you, when you cert, your, your billing to us, our budget appropriations to you is not tied in any formula in the number of people you actually serve in Harrison County. And that's what I think she's trying to get at.
Exactly, I wanted to know how.
Your, your requests from us, when we provide a budget to Region 13, has no formula, no connection to any numbers of people are connected to the actual Harrison County residents as to what we appropriate to you. Whatever, whatever we do is, if, and grant me if I'm wrong, it's kind of a historical thing that you couldn't, nobody could come up with why it was that way. It's just been that way, there's no established formula as to how you, you request budget funds from each county. It's just something that you've been doing, and I think that's what you're getting at.
Yeah, I mean, it was, I wanted to know.
The knowledge actually in Harrison County as it relates to our actual budget appropriations to them.
I know we have the highest population, but I also want to know if we are, if there is a percentage, how the percentages are broken up, and how you, how you came up with that, that formula?
Yeah, so I did come up with that.
Are you just hanging with it, though? You're not going to change it?
Basically, what Marvin said is, that's the way it was. So, when my team on board, I just left it the way it was. I had enough, enough other issues to be dealing with as to what the budgetary formulas were. But in some of the information, we were looking at some historical documents, and it appeared that the initial funding was set based on population. Now, I can't say when it was, that was, that was some old documents back in the seventies. So, it's been some time ago. And then, as we added the CSU, the Crisis Stabilization Unit, I don't know, I could not derive how that funding was set, but each county was approached with a respective budget, and that's what the funding level was set. So, we just, when we've asked for funding requests, I've just done it on the same basis that was already in place.
I think it makes sense, it makes sense that the initial request was probably based on population.
But didn't we deal that unit, or so, it wasn't that paid for by, it wasn't, okay.
I was just going to tell y'all, we, we had this discussion earlier, we went back and reviewed it in detail. The law, there's, there's two laws, statute and there's a Senate bill. Each county is required to contribute, this is weird, but I don't draw the laws, three quarters of a mill based on the 1982 assessment value for each county. To be a, to be a member of this region, the counties, the counties that are members have joined it, have to agree to pay a minimum of three quarters of a mill based on 1982 assessment in order to qualify for the matching funds, not matching, the grant from the state. If you don't contribute a three quarter of a mill based on 1982 assessment, then the region would not be entitled to its money from the state. The authority of each county to contribute is up to two mills annually for the Gulf Coast Mental Health Region. So, you've got a minimum of three quarters of a mill up to two mills. I don't know, so, so, I don't know if we just checked this in years, whether Hancock or Stone or Pearl, for that matter, is contributing three quarters of a mill, that's the minimum. By law, they have to contribute based on 1982 assessment.
I would tell you that, and Pam can hear me out on this, I think we're at or above three quarters of a present mill. So, we kind of stay, didn't stay at eight, what'd you say?
Eighty-six. Eighty-two. Nineteen eighty-two assessment.
We're, we're still at the growth, three quarters of what we are presently, if not close to it, or not, because we can.
Even at eight, at 1982, it would be under a billion dollars for a mill, which is now 2.2 million.
But we, that's what I'm saying.
We're still paying, you know, 1.4 million.
So, we basically still at.
And then, the other thing I want to remind on the board of is, what we've looked at is, I believe Harrison County, at the current count, is contributing 81% of the budget of counties, of the money that the county are contributing, of the 67% of the.
Of the clients.
Clients, okay, are from Harrison County. So, there's that issue too. I mean, we know, we discussed with the other counties about their percentages, and I'm not sure what their response is yet. That ultimately is where the money is.
Can I say one thing? Keep in mind that our appropriations and the disparities of the appropriations from various counties is not, is only part of the problem. The real problem is the billing aspect, which revenue coming in, it's not coming from us, but stuff should be coming to y'all, and that's where the real problem, and the real issue is too, is that the fact that the billing was so messed up that they weren't getting the revenue. And then, what happened is, because of that, because of that, then we have to give more money to keep them going.
But do I understand correctly that employees are not reporting correctly, that we are paying, and that we keep going in the hole for it? Can you not correct that? I mean, there's a breakdown sometime where, between the records? You just said that earlier. Is there not some disciplinary, like, if you do this, you won't get paid, or, I mean, that's.
It's mandatory, it changes the codes periodically.
That's not the code, no. There's the input, no, the input is the problem. You know, when a nurse comes in, she's got all this information.
Right, it's, it's twofold. It's just making mistakes in what you're doing, but it's also using the wrong code set. We were using ICD-9, actually, it's ICD-10 now. That, that changes annually, and we were using some codes out of another manual that is specific to mental health. Well, they weren't in sync with ICD-10, and they shouldn't have. The payer was rejecting, cash was refused. So, once we corrected that, then we were able to fix those claims of rebill, so we did recover some of that, but it doesn't solve the entirety of the problem.
And to answer your question, anytime we find human error, we're always correcting it. I mean, as soon as we find it, we talk to folks and get them to turn it around. So, it's just like, every time we turn over a rock, there's a new thing to fix. So, you know, this is six months here, we're.
And we appreciate y'all, we just, it's just questions, but, you know, we have to answer to the taxpayer about why things are the way they are, and so, if it's employee, or personnel, I guess, yeah, yes, ma'am. Supervise.
So, I understand the formula. You're treating 67% of your patients are from Harrison County. My question is, you don't track what services you, so in other words, if I'm being treated at Gulf Coast Mental Health, you're counting once, but if I'm being an outpatient, or then the next day I'm at CSU, or the next day I move here, do you not count the number of services you're providing?
That you can pull it any way you need it.
Because that, to me, that's a missing link here on this. You have to just say you're 67% of your patients are from Harrison County, but are they using 99% of your services?
I would say clearly, is there a way to track?
Yes, and, yes, actually, absolutely, we can do that. We look at those numbers, I just thought that we wanted to look at, how many patients we receiving, you know, services from, that were Harrison County residents, we wanted to unduplicate that, so that's why I put.
Yeah, and then I finished thinking about it, and I thought, are they using, are 67% of customers only using one service? Are they using all these services?
Right, right. And there's other multitudes that come into play there, because there's therapy services, there's school-based programs, and there's the inpatient services at CRC, and that's one of the things that I noted is, a vast, probably 80% of the patients at CRC are Harrison County residents. So, you know, how do you measure that because of the nature of CRC being a residential 24-hour facility? So, you know, it's more costly operating than.
And my second question, thank you, my second question is, you just hit on your school-based services, what are they doing now?
They're not.
They're working, yes, they are working. They're providing telehealth. So, just like your schoolteachers are, our mental health therapists are doing the same thing as schoolteachers are, but they're not doing the video part, they're doing the phone, they're calling their, their kids, they're able to get the kids on the phone a lot better than, and easier than adults. So, that's working a lot better than it is with adults.
I have one more, one more question, but it's, with CRC, how do you decide that you can afford to expand your services or add to your services? How, I mean, is it budgetary, is it need, is it, does the state help? Is there any, is there a grant available? Is that, what are the variables for deciding that? Because if we're running in the hole, is there, I hate to say limit, I don't want to limit now, because I know this is a terrible time, but, or consolidates some services? Any of those things been looked at? Or, I hate to ask you two questions, I apologize.
Yeah, so, CRC, we do get grant funding to operate CRC as well as fee for service, so if a patient is probably insured, you will know that. Large proportion is Medicaid, so we've been built some of that service to the Medicaid program, but they don't pay the full bill. And so, that's one area of loss that we have is Medicaid. But as far as, we've talked about expanding the program there, I think we have capacity to expand, but it's. about expanding the program there, I think we have capacity to expand, but it's been difficulty in getting qualified therapists on staff, number one. And then, yeah, measuring that, do we, are we at a sufficient level of current capacity to warrant adding that physician position? So.
I'm just curious. My percentage of the budget is generated from the counties, the participating counties?
Currently, it's about forty percent.
That's why it's so critical that those bills get paid.
Yes. Historically, it's been closer to twenty. Historically, it's been closer to twenty.
But that's because we're having to contribute more now. That's the point that I'm trying to make. That's exactly what you're saying. The point that I'm trying to make is that they don't get a bill, that the pressure then is on the counties to appropriate that, that lack of revenue coming in. And that's why it's increased, our portion has increased, our being all three counties, but primarily Harrison County.
Now, you did speak about Jackson County and I just kind of wanted to clarify that we do have one program that is a grant-funded program. It's competency restoration where they go into the jails and provide mental health therapy to people in jails. Now, that, that grant is, funds those folks on that salary. So, but it could be that, well, some of those people that are, that, that is not exclusive to just the three counties. That also goes into Jackson County. So, and it can go into George County. So when we're pulling numbers and, you know, we can answer all your questions, but if we just know that you want the numbers this way, then we don't know what we're really trying to answer. So it's going to pull that.
Basically, what you're telling me is grants you get, for example, from the state or whatever.
Right.
Can be, can, that you actually get region thirteen can be more than just services from more than just the three participating counties, but can go into other counties specifically.
Well, not for them because that's grant funds. Grant funds exclusively covers that competency restoration grant.
Just for, just for law.
Yes. And so that, that's totally covered. And then if we're pulling from April, you know, I'm, I guess that, you know, may have caught some Pearl River, I don't know. So.
Yeah, there are still Pearl.
Pearl River client center as well.
Pearl Rivers, in the future, would it be possible for you to not give us their names, but to track how many Harrison County patients, what services, if it goes by credits or hours served? And so we can keep a close eye. We're paying more than eighty percent of the load and we're not getting those services. So I think we would like to, if we can do that in the future, get it broken down.
Absolutely.
By people in our county.
But we don't know if we're getting the services. We know, we know if we're sixty-seven percent of your clients are from Harrison County. But the big unknown here is, are they utilizing multiple services?
But you said, they said they could track that though, right? You can't.
Yes.
And Pearl River, have you directed them to the new Pearl River?
Yes, ma'am. We don't access people from other counties. In fact, I've had folks try to call and ask for favors. I'm like, no, we don't do favors. So you wouldn't take my favors. So, not for these counties.
Are there any more questions?
I think just back to with the timeframe of when you can correct the human error. Because again, that's not, I hate to be ugly, but it's not acceptable to say, oh, we've got twenty-six, twenty-six percent of our window, our money out the window. But, oh, well, you have an error. It just seems like there really is, is there one bookkeeper? Is there one? I mean, Memorial and big hospitals can do it. It's extremely complicated the way they code and they're getting their money, right? I mean, why can't we get that correct?
We plundered into this six months ago and we've been fixing it ever since.
These are the new people. They're just trying to fix everything.
No, I mean, I'm asking your opinion. Like, how do you get there?
Well, one step, which, which we had the conversation this morning with PMG on them taking out the billing and moving to the EHR. So that will help tremendously. And we initially think that we can do that by mid-June.
Okay.
Move completely to the EHR. That will solve a great deal of that heavy error in the second place.
But as far as your, your individuals, your people that's actually providing the services, that are having to document some way, either on a computer or paperwork and then turn it in here, somebody ultimately is going to get, how does your, how do your contracting it out? What, who was it you said?
PMG.
PMG. PMG is going to have to go to your system, to your people to get the information. So if the problem is with what your people, region thirteen employees are submitting, if that problem doesn't change, PMG is not going to be able to help you at all. They're going to run into the same problem unless PMG hires people to go in and do it themselves.
Yeah, well, one of the aspects of PMG is that they are, they do billing for routine.
Do they do any training of your personnel? And in the way they submit, whatever the process.
They have already actually been in, whenever they were looking at the scope of services, they have already, like, when they would see someone was doing something wrong, have been providing training along the way. They did that before we even have a billing contract.
Contracting it out, we probably have, but if, if, if your problem exists into your own, your own employees and whatever they submit or however they submit is not corrected, they submitted to PMG, PMG is going to have to.
And our billing supervisor did just finish going through all the offices. She's been being in each of the offices to work with the billing managers in those little offices there and talk with the staff. So she spent a week in each one of those. So we just did that, I guess, just before the pandemic happened.
And we appreciate, we appreciate y'all.
They can scrub claims as well.
They better.
Okay. We appreciate, we appreciate y'all. We know that you're under a lot of pressure and we, we do appreciate you, but we have to know that, I mean, we, we don't know what is our future is.
Absolutely.
Budgetary was. So thank you for being here. There's no further questions. We appreciate your being here.
I give Mr. Rocker a more sure clear sixty-seven percent issue. I didn't mean this board. This board has the authority to decide how much of the two million to contribute. It doesn't, doesn't have to be based on population, doesn't have to be based on use. This board makes that determination. The only thing that concerns me is whether or not the other two counties are contributing their fair share for their folks that are getting treatment or are we supplementing. This board makes that decision, not.
That's why we need to know.
That's why we need that piece of information too, is our, is in other counties, they only maybe have twenty percent of your patients, but they, they, their twenty percent might be utilizing all hundred percent services. That's why that piece of info is important to us.
Tell me, Stan, we, we as a board can determine what our budget to them. So does the other two board supervisors. So if we all make cuts, they're going to fill it. Or if, if we don't all get together on how we're going to do it.
That's right.
Well, I'll tell you, we're saying some very sick people, that's for sure. Very difficult decisions for you all.
Have you seen an increase of any kind since the pandemic? Does anyone?
An increase? I would say we have crisis calls that come into the office just about every day and that has always been. What worries me and concerns me is when I'm talking to the directors who run the mental health therapists is that they're not getting folks on the phone. So if they're not getting folks on the phone and they may not be coming in for their medications, what are we all going to be left with after this is all over and that medication is out of their system? So.
I do have great thoughts on this. Thank you. Do you have another question?
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you so much for your service. Just please keep us informed.
That's nice.
Okay, under number two, purchasing department is ordering on the minutes a list of emergency health funds and state contract orders issued by the purchasing department for the month of March twenty twenty. Motion.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Under board agendas, order approved temporary inspection policy as recommended by the Harrison County Code Administration for issuance of permits and inspections due to local emergency within Harrison County due to COVID-19. Motion?
Motion approved temporary policy.
Motion second. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number four, this is to discuss youth court, but primarily the shelter and employees. So I would ask if we could go into executive session.
Before we do that, we need a motion to spread all the minutes. The notice, the board recessed until 10:00 AM from the previous meeting and then we had to move it to 1:30.
Okay.
So we posted a notice so that we have the record cleared. Nobody will complain. I asked the board to move the, spread all the minutes. The notice that was posted, moving the meeting from 10:00 AM to 1:30 tonight.
So move.
Motion second.
Sorry, I meant to say.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried.
For record, I do believe that the next subject, big talk on the shelter does qualify for executive session, but an involved front of the potential source location discussion strategy there involving personnel. And it also involves the shelter, which is similar to the jail as a security issue, where it is and what you're discussing going on there needs to be, that all three of those qualify for executive session.
Make them ask you to go into the closed.
Executive session.
How am I wrong? But I still would be lead to it. Nobody up here is going to executive session.
I don't think, that's what they said, but I don't disagree with you.
Would you like to go to the close and then?
I moved to go in the executive session. Here no.
It's almost a, almost a matter of what does it matter? Some of these we discussed while we're going into executive session.
Is there anyone that objects to that on this board? And so we'll move into, we have a motion in second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried.